Did you guys do it, sir?
We're good.
You guys doing it over there?
Ready to roll.
Let's go.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February thirteenth meeting of the Campbell County School Board. At this time, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance in a moment's office. Thanks.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item up on the agenda tonight is teacher mentoring program. Ms. Honle.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have the privilege of coming to you tonight with two guests that I'll bring up in just a second to talk to you about our mentoring program. It's been a couple of years since I presented this information to you, so we thought we'd give you a little bit of an update, especially after last month. Dr. Stanley and Ms. Robertson came to talk to you about student achievement and performance, so this ties right along nicely with that. When we started looking at the comprehensive plan, really the goal of the human resources section is to recruit the best teachers. Once we hire them, we want to give them a proper induction into Campbell County, and then we want to make sure that they're properly mentored when we have them teaching in our buildings and ensure they have the tools to be successful, effective teachers, and also love what they do, with the goal of retaining highly qualified staff. Just to give you a little bit of background information, I wanted to share some data with you. This chart shows the number of teachers that have retired or resigned over the last several years. If you see there, for a couple of years, nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty-one during COVID, that number remained kind of similar. It actually decreased a little bit from the year before, but this past year, we had a significant increase in teachers leaving the profession. It's harder to be a teacher now. This chart shows the breakdown of years of experience of our teachers. Give you a second to digest that. That's very telling, that the majority of our teachers have between zero and five years experience, and you can see the significant drop off of years of experience moving forward. Just to give you a little bit more information, I like to share where our new teachers are coming from. We had thirty-four college graduates, the most coming from Liberty. Then we have career switchers and other hires. Career switchers can be defined as people that may be changing careers later in life, but also it could be, we categorize them, they may be new out of college, but they didn't go to college to be a teacher. So, for example, Dr. Hale and I went to the Liberty Job Fair last year, and we met a young man that had a math degree. He said, "I don't know what I'm going to do with my math degree," so he came to the Liberty Education Job Fair just to kind of see what he thought. Amy and I talked to him at that career fair, and then, as she was principal at Rustberg at the time, she called him in after that and hired him to be a math teacher at Rustberg High School, and he's one of our strongest right now. So, that's what we would also consider as a career switcher. And then the rest of our new hires are obviously coming from out of state or other school divisions around the area. So, what are we doing to support this high number of teachers that have little experience that we're hiring? Prior to two thousand eighteen, the state requires that all new teachers have a mentor assigned to them. So, that's what we did. We assigned a mentor. I would consider that what we used to do, kind of a buddy system mentor, where the new teacher had a teacher in the building that checked in with them, answered questions, made sure they had all the materials that they needed, helped with grades and that type of thing. Around two thousand eighteen is when we started having a more formalized mentoring program. If you remember, that's when Mary Lynn Arnold joined our team. She was our very first coordinator of new teacher mentoring services. It's quite the title, so we can just say mentor coordinator. Mary Lynn had been one of our elementary principals in Campbell County, and she retired and started doing this position part-time. She started off, helped create our mentor program. We created our first mentor handbook. She met with new teachers. She provided whatever support they needed, answering questions, but she was another level of support that we had not had before for new teachers, just really to make them feel welcomed and supported. She was an advocate for them and tried to help in any way that she could. We also started giving mentors stipends for the first time, which was a big need because mentors were doing and are doing a lot for our new teachers. But again, Mary Lynn was only part-time doing this, so two days a week, two to three days a week is what she was averaging coming in, working with all of our new teachers, pre-K through twelve, special ed, so trying to support all those new teachers. So, imagine her trying to get around two or three days a week to all those new teachers that I just mentioned a little while ago. This is how we structured our program when Mary Lynn started, so she was the coordinator of mentoring services, and then we also assigned a lead mentor in each building. The lead mentors would help the principal with coordination of the program. They disseminated information to other mentors in the building. They handled some training with mentors and with new teachers. They'd have monthly meetings with new teachers and go over upcoming events and common topics that new teachers might need. And then we had our mentors. So, we added those two layers of extra support that we didn't have before. Also at this time is when we were in a partnership with University of Lynchburg and New Teacher Center, so we were able to send cohorts of our mentors to training at University of Lynchburg with the New Teacher Center support. So, we were able to train some of our mentors, not all of them, but the training that they were being provided wasn't feasible for us to implement fully in Campbell County, so due to resources or staff or time, what they were being trained on, we weren't able to fully implement. So, it was helping, but it wasn't quite meeting our needs. And then during COVID, those trainings stopped, so we went for a couple of years where our mentors stopped being trained, so we realized we needed to do something a little different, a little more. Fast forward to this past summer. So, Mary Lynn decided to retire again, and I started looking for a new coordinator of mentoring services and seeing the value in what Mary Lynn was able to do part-time, but realizing we needed to do more. We were able to hire two full-time mentor coordinators. So, we dedicated one to elementary and one to secondary. So, Kim Briggs and Mark Wilburn want to join me up here. Kim Briggs is our elementary mentor coordinator. Kim has been working in Campbell County for more than twenty years. I won't give the exact number. I had the privilege of being her principal when I was at Leesville Road. Kim was a fifth grade teacher, and she decided to lead me, and she went on up to middle school and became a secondary middle school English teacher at Brookfield Middle. She was a mentor of teachers, probably even before mentoring was a real thing. She just automatically mentored teachers. She also became Brookfield Middle's lead mentor, so she knew our program, was very experienced with it, and was just that natural mentor. She's outstanding. She is a phenomenal teacher. She's kind and humble, so she doesn't even realize how great she is, and she has an innate ability to coach new teachers. So, she's been perfect in supporting our elementary teachers. Mark Wilber, he's new to Campbell County this year. He hails from Texas. He went to LU and moved back home, but then he and his family decided to move back to central Virginia. He was a science teacher and then also held a similar position in Texas before they moved back to Virginia. He taught middle school science last year and then applied for our mentor coordinator position, and when I saw his application, I knew I needed to talk to him about it. Mark is dynamic and innovative and just has skills, not only in mentoring, but in curriculum, professional development, so he's been invaluable as well. Between the two of them, their experience and knowledge and abilities to support new teachers has been just great. So, we're creating a Campbell County mentoring program, so not trying to fit in to what another program was bringing to us. We're trying to make it work for us. So, I'm going to let them tell you a little bit about what they've been doing this year.
So, I work with the elementary schools and started off the year with sixty-three new elementary teachers in the county. Spent most of the year working with about half of those. Sorry. These are teachers new to the profession, adjusting to managing a classroom for the first time. We will refer to focus teachers as those new teachers that we've been, spent most of our time with. That number will narrow in scope throughout the course of the rest of the year as they gain confidence and a little bit more experience. Looking to probably have maybe about fourteen in my next mentoring cycle. And I spend most of my time with, well, Tuesdays and Thursdays, the schools that have more new teachers. That's where I spend a whole entire day, and then I'm able to, the rest of the week, split schools.
Hey, good evening, board. So, I've got seventy teachers that I started with. Dwindled that down to about twenty-eight after about a quarter, getting to know them, build relationships, figure out where they're at. Out of those twenty-eight, I'm sorry, out of those seventy, I've got sixty-six mentors. I've a few more mentors in elementary because we're more one-to-one. They're sharing more on the elementary side, multiple mentees, poor mentor. And I'm one day at a campus feeder pattern, except for Fridays. I'm here and then on call to go where I'm needed. So, that's kind of what my day-to-day looks like. We have an office at Concord. We haven't moved in yet because we prefer the libraries and kind of being on the campuses. That's what we're hired to do, so.
And we are. We are in the school buildings almost all of the time, observing new teachers and providing nonevaluated feedback. We're meeting with administrators and mentors and coaches and instructional specialists, kind of creating that collaborative community. We spend time coaching one-on-one with new teachers and usually with a targeted focus on what's going to make them more effective teachers in the classroom. And in doing so, we've built strong relationships with our teachers and built the trust with them because we want them to come back, want them to stay with us. We've provided professional development for new teachers and mentors. We kicked off in August with a new teacher luncheon, welcoming all the new teachers into the county, and spent some time, that new teacher week, within the schools with some basic classroom management type of training. In September, I pulled in all of the new teachers and for classroom management skills and strategies, and Mark pulled in mentors during that time, kind of with an emphasis on their crucial role in all of this. In November, we pulled in the elementary mentors to do the same thing. Mark's done some site-based PD with content areas at secondary level. In April, we plan on bringing in lead mentors to kind of chart our path forward and make sure that we're aligning everything with the needs of our, of our new teachers and to kind of plan too for next year, what new teacher orientation will look like, new teacher induction will look like. All kind of with the concerted effort that we are tailoring this to kind of meet the needs, meet the needs of our, of our new teachers.
So, in a nutshell, what the mentoring cycle looks like for us is, is unique to Campbell. When I came here, it was very evident the uniqueness of this division. I feel like we represent multiple areas of the state within one small place, and I refer to our location as the heart of Virginia. We'll get into that later maybe, but the mentoring cycle for us is, is similar to a, a teaching hospital is kind of where we're at. So, we ensure that our mentors are trained on specific skills. So, we train them on those skills, then we take our new teachers into those classrooms with a feedback form. We say, "Hey, this is what it looks like, and this is what it sounds like." Good instruction in these strategies. We fill out a form saying, "Hey, did these model teachers, these mentors that we're watching, are they correctly displaying, you know, these best practices?" And then we give that teacher a week to kind of digest it, practice it, and we come in nonevalative and say, "Hey, this looks good. Let me encourage you. Let me, let me give, let me build those strengths," but also say, "Hey, we can tweak these areas here." So, they try it out stress-free. We give some feedback, and then that next week, we reflect, and if we need to, we go back, they try it again, and then we come back and reflect some more before we introduce a new strategy. So, the strategies pretty much go every six weeks-ish is how, where we've been, starting with like teacher radar, your ability to be seen looking at all the time, kind of eyes in the back of your head, that skill, we're kind of training those new teachers, all the way to purposeful monitoring where you're getting every kid's voice and making sure every kid is participating, and then moving into, you know, classroom resets and even backward design planning, starting from the standards and making sure that we are teaching kids what they need to know to be successful. And that's that. So, pretty exciting. We're on our fourth cycle coming up, and this is our resources. Everything's on a one-stop shop through our website. We provide for our new teachers as well as our, our mentors. They can request priority service, or they can jump to the front of the line sometimes if they're not on the docket for that week. These are all the PDs we've created for our, our, our cycles. They can refer to those. Before we get into the cycles, both mentors and mentees, they're about fifteen to twenty-minute PDs that are tangible. You can see it in action. It's less theory and more of this is what it looks like and sounds like, which is what they need, to some more strategies. And then even the PDs that we've done this year, those have been recorded, as well as some encouragement from our mentees to our mentors saying, "Hey, you guys are doing a great job. Keep, keep it coming, keep it going." So, here's our impact so far. We're six months in.
And about a month and a half ago, we sent out a lot of my surveys to our new teachers and to our mentors, kind of again, charting our path forward and also kind of recalibrating mid-year to ensure that our priorities were aligned to meet the needs of our teachers. Ninety-six percent of them said that they felt supported by what we were offering for them. Ninety-seven percent said that they plan to return next year, so yeah. No, the life circumstances change, but most of them are planning to, planning to come back. About three-quarters of them noted that the support was, has surpassed what we previously offered, but with a little caveat in there, a handful of them are new to mentoring, so they didn't really have anything to compare that to.
Most so.
Most, thank you. And eighty-five percent said that, "Hey, sign me up again next year." And with a handful of them saying they really liked the opportunity to even lead a little bit more with some, some PD of their own, so we are definitely got some potential there for some, for some growth with our program.
So, we'd like to have the opportunity to let our teachers kind of speak for it on their, on their own.
I like to do some things with this area, it's a very open research community. I feel very welcome and appreciated here.
You can just tell that there's a depth of history and community, but not exclusively.
As someone that just moved to the area, everyone has really pulled me into that.
I love teaching in Campbell County. It is, it is such a breath of fresh air.
I love the people. I think the people are the best aspect of Campbell County. They're very kind, readily supportive. They got each other's backs. If I have any questions, they're happy to answer, they're happy to help me out.
Whatever you have a question, you can ask it, and that's all right. A lot of teachers in a lot of different school districts have a hard time, especially new teachers, asking a question because they're worried about what other people are going to be, but it's really embraced here.
Anytime I've had a problem or an issue, I've reached out to them, and they're very prompt to get back with me.
One of my favorite parts is they provide you so many resources and so much help. From day one, the mentor program has been amazing, just having guidance and being able to pick up on the way other people teach and taking us around, letting us see other classrooms. We get ideas of how other classes are run, so it gives us kind of a key into how we can integrate what we're doing.
It's really made me feel prepared for teaching at the school in the area that I am, and just made me feel heard.
I'm used to teaching, I'm used to my content, but the way things have gotten in this district in Virginia specifically, since I'm allowed to stay in and have that time, I want somebody who really knows.
That's really what we need to be sharing, from being in Campbell for twenty years, back into education, really is what we need to do.
I love the family atmosphere in Campbell County. It's my first year teaching in my own classroom, and I'm very, I'm very nervous, a little overwhelmed getting here, but as soon as I got to Campbell County, everyone's so welcoming, everyone's so nice to me, always asking me what they can do to help me out, to make the transition a little bit easier, and I don't know where I would be without that, so Campbell County's a great place to start teaching.
So, this is obviously a culmination of more than just us. This is an entire unit. This is administration. These are specialists. These are coordinators. This is everybody helping get, you know, the support and the answers and the feeling that we, we have from these new teachers. And by the way, these are all teachers that were hired this past year, from transfers to baby teachers to out-of-state teachers. So, where are we moving going forward? Just quickly, we're excited about different, differentiating our support, helping out, specifically our fine arts teachers, our sped teachers in unique ways, as well as our veterans out-of-state teachers moving into next year. New Teacher Academy, we're excited about taking over that first week with new teachers so that they are prepared for that first day when they come in. The classroom management, the expectations, all of that is rehearsed, all the way to their voice and their tone standing in front of mirrors starting their first day, ready to go, so that when the staff returns on that teacher work week, they're ready to listen to technology, they're ready to listen to our specialists and our curriculum, because the big stuff that's really weighing them down is, is out the way. Mentor development, we're excited about doing a little bit more with building the capacity of our instructional leaders on our campuses, specifically with coaching conversations, training them on how to have tough conversations with guiding teachers towards figuring out their own plan to, to impact their classrooms and following through that, as well as with, there's another piece. I don't remember, but that was really, that was the most important one, so we'll live. Expanding support through year three is also where we're going. So, right now, we're in our first year, a lot with those first-year teachers. Next year, they'll continue with us to kind of push that growth mindset and stay with us for three years as they become that next generation of teachers. So, thank you.
Any questions about our mentor program before I kind of tell you a little bit about our career fair on Saturday? I know that was a high-level overview. I can't say enough about what Kim and Mark have come in and been able to do in our schools with new teachers. The level of support we're providing them is just above and beyond, and we have even more plans for next year. So, we'll spend the rest of this semester continuing to support new teachers. We whittled it down to a smaller group now. We feel like some of them are on more steady legs, but going into the beginning of next year with more solid plans and starting from the beginning and having some of the kinks ironed out that we didn't know going into this year. Any questions about our mentor program?
Just a quick question on, you know, any, any profession, you know, you start day one, you, there's a learning curve.
Absolutely.
But are our new, brand-new teachers, is there certain areas that they're just not prepared, that they're not getting from their education, their teaching education that you recognize?
Classroom management is probably the first thing that I feel like new teachers, they, they have those classes, you know, you take your behavior classes and your behavior management classes and things like that, but until you have your own classroom implementing that, looks very different. So, that's where I feel like, especially at the elementary level and at the secondary level as well, but new teachers coming in need a lot of support in that area.
So, so that's an area that just can't be taught. Is that accurate?
It can be taught, but they, they need to do it, yeah, and they need to see it.
And so, do they get any of that in their stu-, is there, there's still student teachers, right? There's still...
They have practicum placements. All colleges offer or require practicum placements, but again, that's observation hours, so they get to go into different classroom and see it done, and then, that's right. And then they, the ones that do get to student teach do come in and they're able to take over a classroom, but with student teaching, you're going into another teacher's classroom. The expectations are already set. Those students, hopefully by the time the student teacher takes over, already have those routines and procedures in place, so they're not starting it from day one and having to require students to do those things. And then to Mark's point, we have a lot of career switchers. So, again, either the ones that don't have the background in education or the one lady that spoke, she's coming back into education after staying home for twenty years, or young students that are getting out of college with a math degree and don't know what they're going to do with a math degree, so they're going into the classroom for the first time and have never been in a classroom before.
Wow. Have we had any teachers that started and just said, "I can't do this"?
I, I will say, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but this year, the reduction of that has been significant. So, we have had, I want to say, two new teachers, I believe, but the reasons for them not continuing made sense. That was okay, whereas in years past, the, the number has been much higher, where throughout the fall or starting the second semester, that more teachers have left us.
So, this is definitely working.
Yes, sir. In my opinion, yes, and I hope to have numbers for you in the, by the end of the year and moving forward. You know, but even at the end of this year, we have that zero to five range of teachers. We've only been working with brand-new first-year teachers, so we hope to expand it beyond that, and we're only working with new teachers. So, we have other teachers that probably need the support too. They just don't have the time to go in and work with those teachers. So, I, I'll be able to come back and give you some data with new teacher retention.
Can you send that, though?
I sure can, yeah.
I would guess that with, even with, you know, with COVID, you had a lot of new teachers that came in during COVID.
And they had no student teaching.
Right.
They were not able to student teach or go do practicum hours or things like that, so even more we hired this year that, again, had never been in a classroom.
So, that really large spike in those resignations, were they resigning from the profession?
It, it varies, so we do exit...
Were they resigning to go to another area of this district?
It's, there's no one staggering reason why people are leaving. You always have personal reasons, health reasons, you know, moms that stay home with new babies, some that go to other places because it's closer to home. There's not one big reason, but the number increased going into this school year after COVID. It's hard.
Well, this looks, looks great, but it, but it looks well-organized and well-developed.
Thank you.
And that's good.
And so, lots of planning.
And you guys are focused, you're, you're specifically working with teachers, but your goal is to build up our mentor program, right? So, that you're working less with teachers and more with mentors?
That's the goal eventually. We need to do both right now, and we've had mentors that have said, "Thank you, that we appreciate this training that we have not had before," how to, not only to be able to support new teachers, but to transfer into their classrooms too.
All right. Good.
Congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
Do the mentors ever, oh, I say, learn anything from a new teacher?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, absolutely. So, it's a new, new way of doing things, just a different perspective, yeah. So, it's definitely a combination of learning from each other, especially when you can get in and see other teachers doing different things.
What'd he say?
He said it's a different level of motivation when you have someone watching. So, those model teachers that Mark mentioned earlier, when we have new teachers come into your classroom, and it's, we, we tell them, we said, "We don't want a dog and pony show. It's not like it's your formal observation. We don't want you to script everything out," but they know a new teacher, and, you know, we're coming in to see these skills, so it does improve. They want, they want to show off for those new teachers.
I think you were saying, secondary, you have one-on-one, like mentor-to-teacher ratio, is that right?
Almost.
And so, how's it working for the primary grades where your, your teachers are more than your mentors? Are they meeting in groups or...
Well, several of our mentors have multiple mentees because there are just so many teachers. Yeah. Some of my mentors are mentoring two, three teachers.
We try to keep it to a limit of two, but in some cases that, you know, they have to have a mentor, so they do do some things in groups. Lead mentors can do some of the overarching tasks, like, okay, grades are coming up, or conferences are coming up, let's talk through... like, okay, grades are coming up, or conferences are coming up, let's talk through how to have parent conferences, those types of things. But that's been a little loose in the last couple of years, so that's the meeting we plan on having in April. With lead mentors, we're going to spend a half a day with them to develop, okay, what does it mean to be a lead mentor? So we're a little bit more consistent across the schools with what they're doing to take some off of the mentors.
Did any of the older teachers ever go, come and ask questions?
Come and ask questions?
I mean, even though they've been there for years?
We've got one retiring this year that's told me she's learned more in the last year than she's learned in almost 10.
Yep.
Yeah, she's remarkable, she's one of our best teachers in Division 8, so it's pretty cool to see that.
That's great.
That's great. Thank you.
So that's our mentoring program, which leads nicely into hiring for next year, which the personnel office will become very busy, even busier now, I should say. So thank you to those of you that were able to come to the career fair at Brookfield High School this past weekend, it was great. We changed the format this year. In years past, as you know, we've done where it's interviews. So principals were assigned six, seven, eight interviews, so they only met that amount of candidates. We had a way to share feedback and things like that, but we felt like we needed to change the format, one, so that we could include classified staff as well, but then also so that principals could meet more people. So that, we went ahead and changed it this year. We had about 100 people that attended, we had more than that pre-register, but some didn't come, but then we had a number of walk-ins as well. So we had the classified staff in the library, so Dr. Ranelle was there with some of his staff, meeting with transportation people, Tracy Dobbins and some other folks, Ms. Robertson and Denton were there to talk to our classified staff, Jan Heiner was there to talk to our school nutrition staff. It was great. Tracy and Kelsey in my office were just absolutely instrumental in planning this. Then we had certified staff in the cafeteria, and that was the really exciting part, we'll develop the classified part a little bit more, that was the first time we've had them there, so we'll work on that. But the certified, being in the cafeteria was really neat, the energy in there was exciting and positive, and we heard lots of great things, feedback from people that attended, the principals were excited. It was a true job fair format where they could walk around and meet every school if they wanted to, and most of them did. So, yeah, it's really good. So here are just a couple of pictures from it. So as you can see, each school had a table with a display and a Promethean board in the background to show off some technology, where they had a presentation running of pictures from their school. And then there's just some candidates of principals talking to folks. Ashley Walsh and Dr. Hale were there to meet administrative candidates, we had about a dozen aspiring principals and assistant principals that want to work in Campbell County that they were able to talk to. We had people from our office that came and helped, some of the ladies in our office were wonderful. We also had students there to help, which I thought was really neat. Mark and Kim created cards for them with Senate starters or greeting starters for them when people walked in, they would introduce themselves and say what school they went to, and engage the candidates in conversation so that they know how great our kids are, and another great reason to work in Campbell County. Our benefits coordinator and specialists were there, that's the top right picture. So to talk about benefits at Campbell County. And our theme was, "Join our team and we've been waiting for you." And that's kind of what we want our candidates to know, it's a great place to be in Campbell County.
Should we sign anybody up?
So principals were calling me, my phone was ringing when I walked in the door this morning, you'd be proud of Mr. Bennett, he was my first call. So we definitely have principals ready to hire people.
So are you finished, have you finished your presentation?
I think so, yes. Am I down? I've talked a long time, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, I had heard about the job fairs for several years and had never gone, so I went Saturday, and when I turned the corner, it loads to Brookfield High School, I thought there was a basketball game going on.
That's exactly what I thought.
And I parked, and like Amy said, nice young men welcomed you in the door, asking you, you know, what they could do to help, what you were there looking for, they directed you to a table to get you information about what you were doing. And of all the things that I've been associated with in the Campbell County school systems over the years, that's probably one of the very top things I've seen the school system do. Whoever was in charge of it, my hat's off to you, it was extraordinary. People there were nice, they were, everybody was willing to talk, answer questions. I know we had a lot of personnel there, my appreciation to all of them. And I'll just take a minute to, Dr. Pontius, you probably didn't know, but I was walking up the hall leaving, and somebody directed a special education teacher to you, and I just said, "Let me just see how this conversation goes." And you engaged her for at least 10 minutes, and it was like, like me talking to somebody about cows, you were just, I mean, y'all were just, y'all were just doing the best, just talking, and that's, I think that's probably what makes people want to come to Campbell County, to be associated with that. Everybody, I mean, the whole rooms, you saw, everybody was engaged and a smiling face, and I think people were just happy to be there. I don't know how many people will get out of it, but it's something, don't quit doing it. That's, I just thought it was extraordinary.
I thought the testimonials of current teachers and all was really neat. If you're a new, a potential new student, you, a new teacher, you walk up and you see that, that's kind of, that's warming to you, so I thought that was really nice.
So the video we showed you tonight, Mark pared down about 30 minutes that we had, so that was two and a half minutes or so, but we had TVs in the hallway with those running more at length so that candidates could stop and listen to longer testimonials of teachers.
Very nice.
One girl that had contacted me, she was going to graduate, and I asked her what she thought of, and she said, "It was extraordinary," she said, "I was able to interview with at least four schools, you know, in a matter of, you know, an hour." So, I mean, I think it's really convenient for everybody, I guess. My hat's off to you. And I think the fact that they didn't, you know, before, they were such a way to call.
Yes.
This time they were going around meeting people and it seemed to be, yeah, I wouldn't want to sit there for an hour waiting for an interview.
Right.
And like you said, they got to talk to different people at different schools, so it was great, I thought.
Yep. Great job.
First one I missed in a while, but I'm, I'm-
We wish it could have been in Hamilton. Thank you.
Take you the way.
It was incredible.
Thank you. Sorry, that was longer than we expected.
Even people out in the parking lot were stuck because I had my badge on and say, "Thank you." I'm like, "You're welcome, I didn't, I was just attending, but thank you." So everybody was, it was fabulous. Everybody who worked hard on it, thank Tracy too, and Amy and-
Nick was there, representing, representing special ed and then Kim and Mark had a table, making sure, I'm trying, I'm sure I'm forgetting someone, but there was a lot of, all of our directors were there.
Charlie and Mark?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Huge miss right there, Mark Hudson and his team were, yeah, I needed them for Promethean Board, so absolutely.
That's very nice. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next item up, matters from the four. I believe we've got three speakers tonight. Just to remind everyone to please state your name, address, and you've got three minutes to address the board. We'll start with Jackie Mendez, Ms. Mendez, if you'd like to come forward.
Well, good evening. First, I want to thank Ms. Hanley for a wonderful presentation. Thank you so much, know that we care about our teachers. But good evening, my name is Jackie Mendez, I'm a resident of Campbell County and a Moms for Liberty member. I have some great news, building on Ms. Hanley's presentation, I wanted to share with the board, and recently I attended a homeschool conference here in Virginia sponsored by the Home Education Association of Virginia and the Homeschool Legal Defense Association. They're both up in Nova. Both organizations are working with families all over the Commonwealth. This is a summary of the conference. African Americans represented 16% and Hispanics 25% of total enrollment in homeschool programs. Being around inspired parents and children was a sight to behold, and here's why. They're confident in who they are. From personal stories, kids were excited about learning and sharing their academic journey. Students had a drive to pursue higher education goals at prominent colleges. All students excelled in reading, writing, and math, and many scored 1,400 or higher on the SAT, that's putting them on the 95th percentile. Imagine how excited and confident students in Campbell County would feel about learning and achieving scores as high as these. It would be a morale booster for everyone involved, parents, teachers, and administrators. So this is huge, breaking all records that prove that teaching the child to learn in a productive environment is better than teaching a kid how to feel as SEL promotes and proclaims that academic achievement is growing. So I wanted to mention one thing, several families celebrated their children to receiving acceptances to Morehouse, to Spellman, to Halesdale, to UVA, and to Rice in Texas. So in closing, I have already discussed the history of the board in my past statements. So members of the board, in your opinion, what are the pressing issues being discussed in your meetings? Can the four candidates seeking reelection address this question in your response today? It would be very helpful as you seek another term on the board. We, the people, want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Next up, Crystal Coleman, Ms. Coleman.
Good evening, I'm Crystal Coleman, Altus of Virginia Moms for Liberty. Let me tell you a little bit about Sage's Law. The Virginia House just approved a bill which would prevent teachers from keeping a child's sexual transition from their parents. And who might you ask is Sage? She was a 14-year-old girl whose newly asserted transgender identity was kept from her parents. Where, you might ask, did this happen? Right next door, at Appomattox County High School. That school participated in a chain of events that led to Sage being removed from her parents' custody lest she be misgendered, kept in a male children's home where she was repeatedly raped and assaulted, and then fall into brutal sex trafficking until she was rescued in Texas. So for those of you who stick with the "it can't happen here," you better start thinking quickly again. This community is not as ill-informed as you must think. And for those of you who think nothing about the mess found in our school libraries and think it can't possibly add even more to the normal confusion faced by our children as they try to go up, grow up, how could you? Are those the types of resources that you want your children or grandchildren to look to when they face the normal upheavals of the teenage years? Or do you want them to come to you and seek out your guidance, your compassion and wisdom? Well, that's exactly what each parent in this community has the right to. Handing them a form or thinking that telling them the title and author of a book is enough information is deliberately impeding the parental rights that are guaranteed in the Code of Virginia. Yet anyone who dares to question this is immediately labeled a book burner or banner. And talk about throwing salt on a wound, you thought nothing of purposefully adding the following phrase, "Instructional material shall not be designated as sexually explicit based solely on the sexual orientation of the characters therein," to the policy you dropped on this community at the last minute in December. Please explain to this community how this can possibly positively impact the world-class education you keep talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Next up, Mr. Doug Behringer, Mr. Behringer.
I missed you guys. To follow up on Dr. Miller's comments, the last time I was here, I, as Chairman of the Campbell County Republican Committee and the 51st District, we are just very trying to organize the primaries, conventions, et cetera, and we happen to be overlapping. So I apologize for not being here till tonight. So, my name is Doug Behringer, I live about a, I live about a mile from here, on 277 Holland Court, and I'm almost a lifelong resident and love my community and appreciate everything that you guys do. All right. At your November 11 meeting, I offered several suggestions that would help you make it easier for we, the people, to better inform ourselves about your activities. I'm very happy to note that you now attach detailed accounting information to agenda items such as payment of bills and supplementary transfer slash supplemental slash transfer of appropriations. Unfortunately, you do not provide enough usable information for agenda items that concern proposed policy changes. For example, you attach a statement to tonight's agenda that identifies the section of the policy where changes are being considered, but the descriptions are vague at best, and I quote, "Sentence added on student organizations restricted as defined in Virginia Code, Section 2 to 28 to 7." It would really be helpful if you would share the actual sentences or paragraphs that are being added, deleted, or modified. Changes to restrictions on student organizations would be very pertinent in view of what the Satanic Temple is trying to do in Bedford County as a student, potential student organization. At your October 10 meeting, I urged you to revise policies that govern how citizens can publicly address this board. Specifically, I urge you to eliminate the requirement for citizens and even congressmen to request the right to speak before noon on Friday before your Monday night meeting. Unless you need advance notice to prepare responses, I would urge you to allow citizens to sign up to speak immediately before the meeting is called to order. You would still have the opportunity to filter requests, but publicly and on the spot. I also urge you to allocate more than three minutes for citizens to speak if warranted by the topic and complexity of information to be conveyed. I suggested at that time, three simple ways that you could satisfy that request, which would only require you to implement practices that are already employed by our Board of Supervisors. Unfortunately, because of that very same three-minute time limit, I will have to email them to you as a reminder, rather than restate them now. Finally, I'd like to just touch on the opt-in, opt-out approach to some materials and presentations. A CCRC member recently recounted that he and his wife had been placed in such a situation during their daughter's first year at Rustburg Middle School. The school informed the parents that CCPS is mandated to present a controversial program, but noted that parents can opt out. When the parents informed the school of their intent to opt out, the school warned them that their daughter would be the only student in an empty classroom and would probably experience peer pressure as a result. I don't think that was very helpful. Wouldn't it make it easier for our schools, and the same applies to books that students want to take out, and the, okay, one sentence, wouldn't it make it easier for our school to reflect community values if parents were instead given the option to opt in? That would make it easier for parents and students to make politically incorrect choices and also protect students whose parents do not take the time to become informed as they should. And in closing, I would just ask that you consider taking up some of these matters at the future meeting, add it to your agenda for possible discussion and even possible action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Behringer. Okay, I think that concludes to that. Thank you to all our speakers, and I appreciate that. Next item up is approval of the January 9 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the January 9, 2023 meeting.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Brandt, a second by Mr. Maddox, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the January 10 joint board meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Phillips, and a second by Dr. Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. McClanahan, acceptance of donations. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just missed... Payment of bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed those bills and moved to approve payment of them.
Second.
And a motion by Dr. Miller, and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Ms. McClanahan, acceptance of donations.
Tonight, you have ten donations that were listed in advance of the meeting. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion.
I'd just like to say thanks again. Oh, my goodness.
Second.
Did you see this list?
Yes.
Thank you for the donations to all the businesses watching.
Motion by Mr. Jones, and a second by Mr. Brandt. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Non-resident tuition.
Tonight, you have seven applicants listed for approval as county students. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Maddox, and a second by Mr. Brandt. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of requests for supplemental transfer appropriations. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have eight appropriations listed. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Parker, and a second by Mr. Phillips. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of the Special Education Annual Plan. Dr. Pont.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the time of year I bring to you the Special Education Annual Plan. It is a application for federal funds for the special education services, and so I'll walk you through that in detail tonight. What is the annual plan? It's assurances of the federal grant that all children with disabilities have available to them a free, appropriate public education, which emphasizes special education and related services designed to meet their unique needs. To assure that the rights of children with disabilities and their parents are protected, to assess and assure the effectiveness of efforts to educate all children with disabilities, to assist states and localities to provide for the education of all children with disabilities. So that's what we're doing, is accepting federal funds to making sure that we do these things. We also ensure that we're meeting the needs of our students who are homeless through special education as well. But first, let me give you a snapshot of December one of our child count population. On December one, we take a picture of all the students with an IEP. It could change on December second or on May first, but this becomes the... On December one, this becomes the official number. And this is our past ten-year count. As you can see, it's been increasing every year to where we're now at one thousand one hundred and seventy students with an IEP, which represents about fifteen percent of the division. It's been about a twenty percent increase over the past ten years, which is starting to get a little concerning trying to meet that needs. What is the annual plan? Again, it's a federal... Acceptance of federal funds. We get about one point seven million dollars in federal funds, employ seventeen special education teachers, seven paraprofessionals, three instructional staff, and two speech therapists. We also accept funds for early childhood special education. That's a special program for kids who are age two through five, and it's a very unique population to meet their needs. For the fiscal year, we got about forty-four thousand dollars. Doesn't even employ one teacher, and we have over seven. So our special education obviously is much more than the federal funds, a lot for us. We also take a portion of that set-aside funds and allocate it for students who are in private schools or homeschooled, so about thirty-five thousand dollars gets set aside for students who need special services who are homeschooled or in a private school. And here, it would be Timberlake Christian, Desmond-Dos, private schools. They could get direct special education services, speech services, and things like that. So here's what it looks like, not locally, but this is the state level of where we're getting funds from. And so you see, special education, the highest portion, is burdened by the localities. Almost seventy percent of special education funding comes from localities, but yet only eleven percent comes from the federal and about twenty percent from the state. And there's been a big push from advocates and directors and the people who care about this kind of stuff to really ask the federal to fully fund special education. And so if you see, if we could shift that pie chart, it would mean a lot to localities as they continue to pick up that burden. As you see, the numbers are going up, the costs are going up, and so that comes to the locality. And so we're trying to get to the... Our advocacy at the federal level to recognize the need there. We did an inclusive practice survey with all of our schools this past summer and fall, looking at these ten areas of how we're doing with inclusive practices, and things are going well. We're seeing great practices in our schools, even in our after-school programs, our sports teams, our students are able to access and participate. Still always a work to do and to continue to improve on. But things are going really well with supporting our kids' access to non-disabled peers, access to the general curriculum. And we have a broad variety of programs meeting our kids. It talked about the early childhood, we have the school-age population, but then we have special programs for our post-school kids that... Because kids can still remain eligible until they're twenty-two. So we have special programs working with kids through, from after they go through their senior year and still want to continue to receive special education supports. One of our unique programs is called Project Search, and that's a partnership with Central Health, where they have actually given us a classroom at the Lynchburg General Hospital, and our students go there all day, and they rotate through the departments on a couple weeks on a different department, learning on-the-job skills training. We have a job coach with the kids, and we've been doing that for about eight years now. It's been a very, very successful program, and we went back and looked, and we have about seventy percent of those kids who are still competitively employed. The purpose of Project Search is to help kids get a competitive employment with kids with disabilities, and then that's been huge. And one of the things is if we invest in that, we're showing hopefully to the people that make these decisions at the federal level that when you invest in it, you're going to get good returns. And with a seventy percent employment rate, that's really good for a population that historically has not been able to have access to the job market like that. We have a big continuum of meeting student needs. We have a lot of partnerships with our private schools in the area. And then we also operate a joint program with the regional school divisions, Lynchburg, Bedford, Campbell, Appomattox, and Amherst, at the Laurel School, and that has three distinct programs. And I would encourage anybody here to go visit Laurel. I think it's a very, very, very special place. We have the autism program focusing on an ABA approach. But then we also have our medical needs program, working with kids that have very unique and sometimes fragile medical conditions. And we also have a program that we started this year for students that need behavioral supports. It's an elementary program that has some very unique features with unique staff, uniquely trained staff, and counselors to be able to help support those kids as well as their family to get the help that they need. So very, very pleased with how Laurel is progressing, and I encourage anybody to go take a look at that. So how are we doing? Part of that federal grant looks at these things called special education indicators, and I'll just share the first two with you. Where are we at with students with IEPs getting a regular high school diploma? And this is based on nineteen-twenty data. This is always two years delayed for some reason. So this is the recent data that we have available to us from the State Department. And our graduation data is... Graduation rate is eighty-point-five percent. So what does that mean? Well, when you compare it to some of our neighboring counties, we're doing really, really well getting our kids across the finish line at graduation. It takes a lot of work, and that's a testament to the schools from kindergarten all the way up, and at the high school, your counselors, your teachers, your administrators really working to support those kids, sometimes through very rigorous courses to get those credits to be able to graduate. We're really proud of that work and seeing those kids being able to do that and where we stand in the region. So that's in a nutshell. I could go on all night, but I'll cut it there for you. Any questions?
How many are enrolled in the post-high school?
At Project Search, we have about five students. It's also a partnership with Lynchburg City Schools, and they have about five students in it as well. But then we also have a program at Rustburg High School for kids with transitioning there. Usually, Project Search picks up around age twenty-one, twenty-two, and they're very last year of eligibility. So nineteen and twenty, it's about Rustburg High School. Sometimes they'll choose to stay at a base school, like Brookfield or William Campbell, but we also try to have a transition at Rustburg High School, and we have partnerships with a variety of restaurants, organizations that our kids can go in and learn on-the-job skills, working at those things. They might go out one day a week or two days a week to do on-the-job training at certain businesses around the community, to kind of like an internship here at the Tech Center would do. And that's about post-graduate kids, is probably around twenty total in the division.
Wow.
That choose to stay on through, you know, sometimes they'll stay through twenty-two, and sometimes they'll get, you know, move on to an employment opportunity.
Thank you.
What was the grant request last year, even though off the top of your head?
It was about the same.
Same thing?
Yep. And it's not really... I'm not asking that. They're telling me what I'm going to get.
Even though our numbers are going up, they're not giving us any more.
Correct.
So is this money that was originally every child succeeds money?
No, this is IDA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
And so this is mandated money from the Federal Department of Education?
Correct.
Okay. And so...
It's a federal program, yes.
It's a federal program that... And it... Was it designed to... Its original design, how is it supposed to meet the needs? A hundred percent, fifty percent?
They promised when it was originally enacted in nineteen-seventy-five, up to forty to fifty percent funding. So it was really a carrot to the states to encourage states. If you take this month... If you... States were... It's a complicated history, but nineteen-seventy-three, the Rehabilitation Act, Congress realized that it actually started with veterans coming back from Vietnam, that employers weren't... Employers weren't giving veterans accommodations. And then they started looking at the schoolhouse where they were leaving kids with disabilities outside of the schoolhouse. And Congress said, "Well, we also want kids with disabilities to come into the schoolhouse." And so they kind of gave this carrot out to the states with, in terms of grants, saying, "We'll give you grants to help you bring kids into the schoolhouse." And they promised states up to forty to fifty percent funding of that cost to do that because states were like, "Well, this is going to be... This is going to cost us." But they've never really lived up to that kind of promise. It's been well-talked about in the circles of special education.
But it was legislated... They had a number when they legislated this?
Like a forty percent number? I think it's more in the notes of what was promised to states.
Could you go back to the slide that showed the trend?
Sorry.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
So it's been a twenty percent... What's... What is leading that increase?
There's three primary leaders of that. One is... One is us. We're doing a really good job of finding kids with disabilities in the two-to-five population. Historically, that's been very difficult because they're not in our schoolhouse. So going out in the community and finding them has been a big focus of us because we were finding them in kindergarten, first grade, and going, "Well, where have you been?" You know, "You need our help." And so we've really tried to focus on early intervention to find these kids at that younger age. So that's been one driver of it. The other one has been autism. One in sixty-six kids in the country, according to the CDC, has autism, and that should alarm everybody. So autism's been a huge driver over the past ten to fifteen years. And the other one is other health impairment, things like ADHD, has been a huge driver of that. So the offset of that is the ability to meet their kids' needs in the general curriculum class. So if it's an inattention problem, when does inattention become you need special education? And how that works. And so it could... Talks about the support that our mentors are doing, being able to meet kids in that classroom, meeting their needs there without the need for special education services on some of those types of disabilities. Your more classic disabilities, like intellectual disabilities, those numbers have been stayed constant. Learning disabilities, those haven't changed. Yeah.
Just one other thing. I would like, if you would, since I'm very familiar with Laurel...
Yeah.
I would just like for you to share with the board a little bit more about what goes on there, and especially about that new group. Well, we added autism...
Yeah, a few years ago.
Three years ago. So it's just... Would you...
Yeah.
Would you just expound a little bit?
I could talk about it all day long. Again, you've got to visit Laurel to see how magical it is. But historically, it was for trying to meet kids with unique needs that we were not able to in, you know, very few disabilities that you have one in your school system, but when we pulled them together back in the eighties at Laurel, medically fragile and things like that, it has two nurses being able to address those unique medical needs. And then we added autism to be able to address kids that need applied behavioral therapy in the classroom, an intensive and highly-trained staff. And then we've added, this past year, through the Laurel Board, the Behavioral Program, which is, right now, it's for elementary kids. It has a teacher and two paraprofessionals working with it. But then it also has another BCBA support that, which is a behavioral analyst.
Can tell them what...
Yeah, that's a behavioral analyst who has unique trainings and skills to be able to assess the functions of a behavior. All behavior shows a purpose. All behavior communicates. But all behavior can change. And so they kind of look at that, saying, "What is the purpose of this behavior? What is it serving the child? What is the child getting out of this behavior? And then how do we engage in things and help the child change this behavior in a positive way?" They're really good at tracking that, analyzing that. But then also on that, we added in a school social worker or a mental health component who could provide that therapy part because a lot of the kids are coming out of very traumatic backgrounds, things that we can't imagine a five-year-old having experienced it and are very broken. And so trying to heal those places where they've been broken through the mental health supports, but then also reaching out to families, giving them skills and coaching families and helping them access supports that they need has been really, really effective. We're seeing really good growth out of the kids and that kind of stuff.
Well, I would like to share that these kids have been identified in our schools...
Sorry.
That we can't handle. But our goal through this program is to get them the help they need so that they can come back into our schools and be a productive student.
That's right. It's a kid that we've just not able to meet their needs in our... One of our programs, existing programs, that need a real intensive approach beyond like what a cornerstone could provide or something like that. Some of them might have been at a cornerstone, and their needs exceed that or need something more stable than cornerstone. Cornerstone's meant to be a transitional program, and so that's where we would send them there. We bus them there and provide the transportation and things, yeah.
How many kids do we have at Laurel?
We have one right now.
Just one?
We'll have more on the way. And we just started that classroom this year. So as we get the second one up and running next year...
One in the program. No, I mean in the whole school.
Oh, in the whole. I think we have seven.
So... And then Laurel also provides some outside services too.
They also work on that transition support, getting kids in the community and job training supports and those types of things, yeah.
It's amazing what they do.
It is. It is really a great place.
They're dedicated staff, and it's amazing the dedicated leaders from each school division like Dr. Pontius, what they do for these kids. It's... It is amazing, yeah.
Any other questions? This does require board approval. For the annual plan specifically, sorry.
Yes, I move that we approve this plan and... Let's just keep beating the drum to the federal people to pony up what they said they were going to pony up.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dr. Miller, and a second by Ms. Parker. Is there any further discussion or any questions for... Pontius?
Thank you for your time.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Sisk.
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, you have two first readings. First one is Policy EEA and Policy IDGA. I urge you to take a look at those. If you have any questions, give me a call.
Mr. Sisk, the only question I have, when these are presented to us, you give the summary, but also we have the opportunity to read the whole policy. Is the... Are the citizens of the community, are they able to see that?
I understand they have access to those as well.
Mr. Behringer, you have access to the same material that we have on the policy updates?
So Scott and Denton, it's actually a hyperlink right above the attachment. All you have to do is click on it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sonley, personnel report.
Thank you again. You have the personnel report in front of you unless you have any questions. I'd ask that your approval is written.
No question, the move for approval.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Mr. Jones. Is there any further discussion or questions for Ms. Sonley?
Are we doing a CDO class?
Starting in March.
Starting? How many got signed up?
Well, the, the, our process will start tomorrow. Some of the folks will be met on Saturday. They have to do background checks, they have to do fingerprints, et cetera, get them into the position treatment center. Hopefully, we're ready for five individuals in that class. But we, as I said, we'll start that process tomorrow, bring those people in, start a big fingerprint.
Got you, thank you.
No other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sonley.
Now comes the fun part.
Next item up, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's that time of the year again, and it's always exciting. And we're having to do it a little bit earlier this year than we've had to do in the past. And so what we presented to you tonight, let me see, we've got a presentation. So let me, let me start by saying that we've done, we're doing this just like we've always done. The most concrete information we have was presented in the governor's budget, but you have heard a lot of discussion about changes that are, that are being made. The General Assembly is in session. They have, both houses have approved their budgets and they have sent them to the other chambers. And the, and the conference committee has been convened. So we hope maybe by the time they adjourn and next Saturday, that they might have a budget, but I'm not real optimistic. So this is, this budget here is based off of what the governor has presented to us and I will go through the highlights. And you have this in hard copy. So other, and this is probably the most important slide that you're gonna look at. These are the big changes that are in this upcoming budget. As you know, the binding budget had a five percent raise and we received compensation supplements from the state last year as well as this upcoming year. There's also in the, in this budget, a one percent retention bonus. The, and then really, the others are just increases to what's already there. I may have mentioned to you that we did not have a very good year in our, in our health insurance funded program. So there is a ten percent increase added in this budget this year. Our property and auto liability insurance, our risk insurance is going up significantly. We've increased by five percent. Our estimate on fuel and utilities, I think everybody's experiencing that. And then, as you know, we received a grant, we got our local match for that at two, you know, two hundred and thirty-six. So those are some increased expenditures that are significant to our budget, you can see that. As far as personnel, we do have to increase our ESL from a part-time to a full-time. Those are students that are English language learners. Our population of those students is increasing and there's a mandatory ratio of teachers per student that we have to meet. So we have to go to a full-time position here from a part-time. Not too many years ago, we had one part-time position doing that job across the entire division. Now, we have eight full-time. We have the one special education aide, one secondary STEM teacher, that's from Rustburg Middle School to the new school. We have, for those of you who've been in there, we have those STEM labs. They need an elective at Rustburg Middle School, just like they do at some of their others. So we're gonna advertise for a STEM teacher. And then the vacant social worker position has just recently been filled, but that's a position that's been in our budget. So in the governor's budget, you can see the, the five percent increase for the standards of quality funded positions is a little over, almost three, almost four million dollars. But you know that there's a local match that has to go along with that because no one staffs at the minimum SOQ level. The one percent bonus payment is three thirty-three. The grocery tax, tax hold harmless has been on, something that's been discussed quite a bit in the last couple of weeks. So there was an era that was made in the calculation tool, calc tool, we call it. It's a calculation tool that all school divisions get that basically helps us determine what, how much money we're gonna get and in what categories. Well, that era was made last year, but it wasn't reported until just recently. So the, the General Assembly has discussed and have agreed to hold us harmless for the FY twenty-three, the year we're in right now. But they haven't yet talked about how they're gonna guarantee holding us harmless in FY twenty-four, okay? So that's still out for debate. So the budget that you got tonight, we're assuming that that's going to happen, okay? Because I've been told by our local delegates and some of them that it is, but I haven't seen anything in writing yet that says it's going to. So we're assuming in this budget. So if, if not, then we could have a hold in this budget, okay? But we'll know something hopefully in the next couple of weeks there. So there is money in the hold harm for the grocery tax, but we're not sure that the way they calculate basic aid, if they calculated that, well, they didn't calculate it properly, they didn't take it out, okay? And then as they do every year, re-benchmarking all of the standards of quality and that's, that's a revenue that we got. A little over about one point six million new revenue, is that right, Michelle? In state dollars?
One point six.
Yeah, approximately, okay?
Do you think you'll have an answer on it, that you said approximately a couple of weeks before we have one next week?
Yeah, the General Assembly is, is scheduled to adjourn next Saturday. And so I believe it's next Saturday, or the twenty-fifth. And follow, so I hope we know something then, but we'll, I'll keep you posted on that, okay? No changes to the VRS this, this year, those rates are the same. But as I said, you know, our health insurance on the employer's side, we're gonna budget a ten percent increase, and you can see that's significant. As you know, the, the average daily membership drives our budget. The Department of Ed, as well as our own in-house data folks, provide us projections which, so obviously, if it's based off ADM, if you budget, if you overestimate your ADM, you're gonna have a budget shortfall. And if you underestimate it, you're gonna get additional revenue that you don't have appropriated. So, but we've done a pretty good job at hitting that. So this budget, you can see that our numbers were actually up a little bit. So this, this budget is based off of the, the governor's projected ADM.
The DOE, we're basing it on the.
School nutrition budget, that, that'll be, you'll be asked to approve that along with the operating budget. Those are two separate budgets.
Does it count, does it count the summer meals or is that a totally different grant or what?
No, that's a different program. This is, yeah, I'm pretty sure, I'll verify that, but I believe that could be a different program. Because you can opt in to that and hold, so anyway. Just, just, these are just some slides to give you an idea of where our money comes from. Obviously, the state, because our composite index is low, we get more money from the state than we do localities. Okay? Oh, and let me back up while there. So on this slide, so for the last three years, you have not asked the county for any additional, you've asked for level funding off, for those, this budget does require an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand from the county. So that, that ask will be just like ours and it's been. And these are just some graphs to give you an idea of what that funding levels was like. Same with the revenue, this is the expenditure slide, slide to show you where the majority of our funds go.
Assuming where it stays where it's at now.
Assuming where it stays where it is now.
Right.
Correct.
So you're saying?
Go back one slide, can you go back? Say that again.
So you say we anticipate about one point six more from the state and then we're asking, gonna ask the county for seven hundred and fifty. So roughly two point five million more than last year. That's gonna cover that other five percent.
Yeah, that, yeah, that will cover that other five percent that's in there. Because we do get compensation, a supplement from the state for that, not all of it, but some, so yes.
And that'll be a continual, continual expense.
That is, yeah, an ongoing expense. Obviously, the majority of our, our money's in instruction and primarily, you know, teaching staff.
Are there any new buses in this?
Two.
Two? I'm staying consistent.
How about vans?
Can't give them. No, we don't have any vans at the moment, but, I mean, we may have to do some replacement, I'm not sure. That'll be part of Dr. Renello's budget if he has to rotate money, you know, any extent, any other, his fleet, which we do regularly in maintenance, but Brand handles that. And so just a reminder, you'll have a second board meeting this month, primarily just to adopt the budget so that we can get it over and meet the county's deadline. And if we get any changes between now and then, I'll certainly communicate that to you in advance of that meeting as, as quickly as I can to make sure that, you know, you're prepared to adopt. Hopefully, I certainly would hope that we'd have something by then. If, and, and I fully expect to have to come back in April and make amendments if it, I really would. Just like this past year, we had to come in and make some late changes. I mean, there's discussion in Richmond, being a seven percent raise. There's discussion about taking the bonus out, folding it into the raise. So I don't, I don't know where they're laying. But as you get into this and start looking, if you have any questions, you can give me or Michelle a call, we can help you through that.
So the one percent bonus retention, is that to everybody or is that?
It was all instruction.
SOQ.
But that, but.
That's just SOQ.
SOQ, but so we, there'll be a local match to that as well.
Got you.
But, but in the, I think the Senate version of their budget, they passed, they took that money out and did something else with it. So we'll see where that comes out.
Hold a call. Any other questions?
You too.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Report of the superintendent, do anything else?
Oh, you have a flyer about the, the SBA.
Yeah, okay, I got you. Oh, I'm sorry, yep. Thank you.
Yeah, I have just a couple comments. One, I have two really great presentations tonight.
I don't think you're much.
You realize over the years that it's part of the strategic. It's part of our plan in regard, no, you know, retaining our teachers that we get is as important as going out and recruiting new ones. And that's, so I think you see the investment we've made in the mentoring program that's paying off and, and, so we're really excited about how that's gonna continue to grow and go forward. And then the, the job there this weekend and so forth, but just good things that are going on in the schools. A lot of times when you hear a lot of bad, it's not going on in the schools. Along those lines, there was recently a lot of discussion about school divisions withholding awards that, that students have received through the National Marriage Scholars Program. We don't, we immediately notify those parents as soon as, and child as soon as that comes in. So we don't withhold that information, but I want to make, if you were concerned that we did that, we do not. I just received today and noticed that on this past Friday, that the governor signed a, a resolution making February the fifteenth, School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. So we will, I sent that out to everyone. And I, I just read today in an article, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate the working relationship we have with Campbell County Sheriff's Department and how well I think it, it works. I was just reading today about a contentious situation in another's division, not, not close by, but north of us. And it's, it's not like that. And, and so I, I appreciate that and everything they do. So we, I sent this information out to principals. I know earlier in the year, we, we did a little recognition for our school resource officers, but I'll, in advance, I would say, we appreciate you and I hope that schools will recognize them as well, okay?
Absolutely.
Oh, and Ms. Parker asked me to, to, we recently, when I say we, Central Virginia Community College, Campbell County, Bedford, App Matthews, Lynchburg, all joined collaboratively to write a lab school grant application. You may recall the governor put some significant dollars into wanting to grow lab schools. And so we, we already have a really strong partnership with CBCC through our dual enrollment program. So we're looking to expand that program and do some unique things with our dual enrollment students. And so the, the grant that we wrote is just a planning grant and to, to get the resources that would be needed to design the program and get it up and running, you know, hopefully by FY twenty-five, not this fall, not twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's, was just submitted last week. And we, yes, it's almost, you know, moving on to something. And so we, we did move into the new Rustburg Middle School last Thursday. And it went extremely well. I can't thank the people who helped plan and navigate that transition more because it was a, a lot of work. And I appreciate the work that everybody put in to do that. I would, I've told some people over the course of the last year and a half, and as that thing, as that building came out of the ground and we talked about moving into, one of the things that I lost sleep over was the move. And just a transition into a brand-new building that we'd never operated, you know? So it went extremely well and I think everyone was excited. There are little hiccups here and there, but that's gonna happen, you know? And so, but everything's been great. Contractors have been great to address the issues that have come up, a leaky water pipe or whatever it might be. You know, once you, when you fill that school up, it's, it stresses it a little bit, all the systems and everything, which it should. And it's, and so the first time, so we're still trying to balance some of that out. And, but the part, I mean, the traffic has been better, I think. And I think getting those buses off of the, off of five oh one was, was, if you recall, one of our big objectives, we wanted to help with that. I was worried we weren't gonna have enough park, I mean, enough room to get the car riders in, but they, we did. We had fewer staged out in the rotor than we've had when, at the old school. So I, I think it's gone really well. And again, I commend everybody who had a hand in making that happen. Later on, I'm gonna have Ms. Condeff and her, and folks again to recognize them formally in front of you. She's been running one school and helping build and design and get into a new school. And that's no easy task, but she's been great. And everyone has. The technology staff, you know, they have a lot of the stuff, some of the technology stuff we did ourselves, you know, putting all our switches. The technology staff, you know, they have a lot of the stuff, some of the technology stuff we did ourselves, you know, putting all our switches and all that stuff, but Mark and his team have been great, I mean, they worked long days to transition over and to get that done, and it's truly spectacular. We're gonna start tonight, I think, we had, or tomorrow night?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, we have sixth, seventh, and eighth grader gonna visit on three different nights, their parents. And the reason we had to stage it, because obviously we don't have enough permanent parking yet, the permanent, more parking will come in the second phase of that project. But, but parents will be coming in there starting tomorrow night, but, and then we're planning on having a full grant opening, open house this summer when the project is complete. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Okay. Matters from the board. Mr. Brand.
Oh, hold on one second, sir. Oh, first of all, I'd like to thank Amy and her folks, all of you, you know, did an excellent presentation, excellent job, good to see everybody. And as far as everything with Rustburg Middle School and getting everybody, thank everyone who has been a part of it, so to make that a reality. Also got a few things here from Brooklyn High School, two teachers recently named Lynchburg living top teachers, Sarah Davis and Cory Arms. Also, Pride, Pride to this play was a hit at Brooklyn High School, ran four days earlier this month. A lot of talk has been about the job fair. Want to thank Brooklyn High School and Amy and all those folks there, doing such a wonderful job. Several track students qualified for states, which will be held at University, at Liberty University the last weekend this month. And forensics was region 3C run up, and several students qualified for states. List of the names, I'll be glad to share it with staff so they can put it in report. That's all I have.
What's the matter?
I'd like to thank everybody who worked on the budget, it's gonna be another interesting year for us. The job fair was amazing, and I'd like to also not, and thank everybody who took their Saturday to come out and do that. Rustburg Middle School, I'd like to thank everybody that worked on that, and one thing at the job fair, they had pictures of the kids walking in that school, and you could tell they were just amazed when they went in there. Last two things, I went two weeks ago, I think, to William Campbell High School, the basketball game, and I'm standing there for the national anthem and I'm used up already. And a kid started singing, and I'm gonna tell you, that young man was amazing, I don't know who he was, but a lot of people turned their heads. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate Ron Thornhill and the Chiefs for winning the Super Bowls, good for somebody from Campbell County, just put this on the map. That's all I got.
Two rings. Doc Mill.
Yeah, just like to repeat, you know, this mentoring program and all the work we're doing just reflects how proactive we are, that we wanna be a step ahead, you know, the job fair, the way we've done it a little bit differently this year, and it sounds like it was a positive thing. Constantly looking for ways to improve, and that's just how we like to operate, and we continue to operate that way, and I just thank everybody who's part of that. I talked to Mr. Bennett down at the elementary school, things are going well, it's a constant, constant battle to get some of these kids caught up, but they're working diligently to do that. They're starting an after-school remediation for some of these kids that are still behind and, and everything we can do for these kids so, so that when they get to their senior year, they can be 1,400 and above on their SATs. So I think we're still doing everything we can to try to accomplish that. I went to the Peter Pan play at the Rustburg High School, it was a lot of fun, and a couple of those roles had an incredible amount of dialogue, and it just amazes me how well these kids can remember all their lines and, and they did it, you know, just really, really well, it was a lot of fun. And I got to go on a tour of the, of the middle school last week, and man, that's a showpiece, that is really something we can be proud of. And I, I really think the other counties are, are gonna look to us and look to that school for, for inspiration, it's, it's a real feather in our cap that we can, that our county can really, really be proud of, and I'm proud of that. And, and I know so much work went into it from the beginning to the end, and just, everybody deserves a, a thanks for being part of that, and it's really exciting, I'm really proud.
Mr. Jones.
Me? Where's he going? I'd just like to thank Dr. Whitney Renella at Concord for hosting us last Friday for School Board Appreciation Week, the hospitality and kindness and guys, the food was just unbelievable, and certainly appreciate her and her staff for preparing that. Again, I think the transition from the old Rustburg Middle School building to the new one is going very smooth, I think, I told Mrs. Kundoff at Brooklyn, she needs to get some kind of award, I don't know what it needs to be, but for her leadership and, and making it happen is, is really, really wonderful. And I'm really glad the board supervisors were able to get in and tour it, you know, knew whether they could see it firsthand instead of hearing other people try to explain it to them, because honestly, it's hard to explain to people what you see in that school, it's just hard to explain all of the intricacies and, it's just, I'm happy they were able to see it. I've heard nothing but very favorable comments from parents of children that are going there. Dr. Hale, will you help me just a second? Would you help explain that at the governor's school, the, the board, the, the table was, what the, what's the term for that thing?
It's an anatomy table, but it's all digital, and it's, I don't know how you say it, but the table that allows the students to basically perform their sections of like a human cadaver. It's all digital, that's part of the anatomy program there, so this was purchased a while ago, but it's taken time to come in, instead of the board, you're able to see it in person, and it's pretty neat because it's actually based on images from an actual human. And so they're able to do that without having to travel and be able to see that in person, a real life experience, and also maybe highlight the anatomy field and medical field as part of that, which is awesome, so it was nice to be able to.
Thank you so much, you did a much greater job than I could have ever done, I would have just said, it's like two of these tables put together with an image of a body laying there, you can rotate it, you can push a button and it shows the blood flow, it's just, it's amazing, and it's just, I'm sure the kids will get a lot of benefit out of that. Again, the donations tonight, certainly our gratitude goes out to those that made the $11,621 worth of donations, that's extraordinary. This is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, we thank you for what you do, or I thank you, and I'm sure the others thank you as well.
We all thank you.
And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Phil.
Right, yeah, speaking of donations, I couldn't help but notice one donation was from Brookmeal Poultry Incorporated, which I guess the high price of eggs is helping to make a donation to Campbell County Public Schools, which is great. But thanks to Ms. Briggs, Mr. Wilburn, and Ms. Hunley for the great presentations tonight and all the great work you guys are doing with the mentorship program, thanks for coming out this evening. Dr. Pontius, thanks as usual for your efforts and your presentation tonight, appreciate all the hard work you and your team do as well. Echo Barry with the Concord lunch that we attended last week and the awards assembly, you know, they've got a program there where they break up the kids, they have a different color t-shirts they hand out for different initiatives that they take on, so that was a really good awards program that they had there after lunch we went to last week, so enjoyed that. Yeah, I did benefit from a tour last week of the middle school, Rustburg Middle School, it is outstanding, I won't pile on top of it, everybody else has already said, but it is an outstanding facility and got a little feedback from Ms. Kundoff, she said they did get all moved in. It was a three-day blitz to get all the equipment and materials moved out of one school and into the other schools, so that went amazingly well. And as we mentioned, they have the grade level open houses this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from four to six. At Yellow Branch, they have teacher conferences coming up and a reading event coming up in March to celebrate reading. And lastly, at the high school, also went to see the Peter Pan presentation, that was great, we really enjoyed that, so thanks to the theater department and all the hard work that went into putting on that presentation. I think it started Thursday evening, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, I think it was four performances, so they did a great job with that. Boys' basketball team will advance to the regional tournament, we had Noah Wells advance to the state swim meet, and Landon Markey is advancing to the state wrestling tournament. And we've got Fine Arts tonight coming up on March 7th, so put that on your calendar, come out and enjoy what has to be offered there that evening, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Phil. Ms. Park.
Yes, thanks to Michelle and Tracy for all they do for us, I also wanted to say the Brookle Open House and the high school and middle school open houses were fabulous, got to meet a lot of great teachers, a lot of their new teachers, they actually mentioned the mentorship program to me, so thank you guys again for that as well. Everyone feels a sense of community, I get that everywhere I go, it's just awesome. I do wanna thank Mr. Scott, our government teacher at Brookle High School, for, I love him more than I love you guys, and I wanna thank him, actually, he talked about local government today, started at the White House level, all the way down to local offices, and he had each student got a name, they had to look up personal and things about them personally and things that they do in their elected office, and of course, he gave my son me, which was kind of funny. But Mr. Scott's fabulous, we're gonna look at maybe adding field trip to Richmond capital next year. Ms. Dukes also in counseling at Brookle Middle School, took some great time with me, to teach me about our career development at the middle school through our counseling service, and I went on an eighth-grade field trip from Brookle Middle School to here, to the tech center, so I could see what it was like. And man, they got it easy here, right, they get fed from the culinary arts department, it was pretty cool, it was fabulous. I wanna say thank you to Jay Don, who was the student ambassador from Alta Vista in my group, and then he opened the door for me at the job fair on Saturday, and he remembered me, he was a great young man, I was very impressed. Thanks to Ms. Wilson and Mr. Hardy, they did a fabulous job at the tech center field trip for the students, it was very inspiring, I would wanna go here if I was in eighth grade. I went to the Capitol Conference, also in Richmond with School Board Association, and very eye-opening, I've been to Richmond a bunch this year, I got to meet with our C U, got pulled out, great conversations about some of these budget issues in person with legislators, it was fabulous. Also went to Richmond for the launch of a new School Board Association alternative that is on the BBOE site now, and they're going to be increasing some offerings to us as school board members. I wanna thank Dr. Hale, Ms. Walsh, Dr. Stanley, I didn't get their last names, but Crystal and Allison for taking the time to sit down with me at Central and explain some of the resources that our schools use and how they use them, I was super impressed and appreciated their time. Ms. Principal Renella for, for Concord, we also got t-shirts, so I'm part of house determination at Concord Elementary School, it was super cool. Job fair was great, and then I need, lastly, I'm gonna thank Ms. Hanson and Ms. Cole from William Campbell, I went on my first tour at William Campbell today, and they were fabulous. And that's all I have.
I have absolutely nothing else to say, but thank you, covered it all.
Just a quick reply or follow-up to the comments you all made earlier, I just, this is more information on Mrs. Hunley, and before you go, I'll turn it over to the closed session, so it's on the agenda. Last night, I checked the, the agenda, this morning, I checked the agenda, I checked the agenda again, depending, I took a quick look around three o'clock, and the only thing that was on the agenda that I could downline was a table with two rows and three columns. It had a number or a code, a, a name of the document, and a brief description, and there was no hyperlink at that time. Now, I'm glad it's there, it was also listed as preliminary agenda, it's final agenda now, so it is there, I just didn't have time to find it, so I want to apologize for saying something that was partially inaccurate, but also make the point that it wasn't there at a very timely rate, and please, get that hyperlink out there a little sooner, would please, so I was able to say like that, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, last, I would like to just real quick highlight a couple things, I do echo everything everyone else has said here tonight, but I would also like to thank Ms. Renella and the staff at Concord Elementary School for the invite and the delicious lunch Friday. Always look forward to that every year, and it never disappoints, enjoy it every year.
I'll look forward to it.
It's, it was a lot of fun, and, sorry, I couldn't stay, I had to get back to work, but I did stay for lunch.
We did, we did eat dinner.
Next thing, just a great job with the job fair Saturday, really glad I got to get over there and see that, love what you're doing with it now and look forward to, you know, I know you said you're still working and tweaking and, but, but it was great, and we enjoyed it. Congratulations to everyone for the smooth start at Rustburg High School, Middle School, looking forward to a tour myself here pretty soon, but it just sounds like everything went without a hitch, and I'm sure there were little things that went on, you know, but nothing major, and I think it's just, it's great, and it's just a testament to all the hard work that went in to making this transition go as smooth as possible. Thanks to everyone for the work they put in on the budget, and thanks to everyone for the work that's yet to be done on the budget, there's still a lot to do, and we appreciate all the effort everyone puts in to pulling that off every year. And last but not least, I would also like to personally just thank the resource officers for all you do for our schools. I mean, I talked to so many people that are not as fortunate as we are to have the SRO participation that we have here at Campbell County, and we appreciate everything each and every one of you do for us, so thank you very much. I think that's about all I've got, I do believe there's a need for a closed session tomorrow, so at this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we convene a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters or other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning students in the school division, specifically students number 27 through number 30 from the 2022-2023 school year in accordance with section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia as amended, and discussion of personnel matters relating to assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of a specific employee, being employee number two in accordance with section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Second.
Got a motion by Dr. Miller and a second by Mr. Brand, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, sticking up by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take a five-minute break and then get back, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did you say?
Yeah.
I'm gonna come on here.
No.
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah.
It is more than here. It is more than here.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I ask for a motion certifying that to the best of each member's knowledge that during our closed meeting, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Maddox and a second by Mr. Brandt. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, and at this time I'll...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the administration's recommendations on student number twenty-seven and thirty. And also make a motion that we accept the administration's recommendation as amended on students number twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Is there any other business to discuss tonight?
There's no other business, I'll move with adjourn.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Brandt to adjourn and a second by Dr. Miller. Say any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, meeting is adjourned.
See y'all then, I'm off.